Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna start the meeting. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We've got a lot on the agenda. We've got some long presentations, so we've got to... And we have a closed session as well. And so, to get started, let's go with introductions. We're gonna start with our clerks.
Good afternoon. I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon. I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Please.
Good afternoon. I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell, elected by the people of District Six.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
And I'm George Dunlap, elected by the people of District Three.
Good afternoon. Lee Altman, County Commissioner, Serving at Large, and I have the honor of also serving as Vice Chair. Welcome.
Good afternoon and welcome, everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District Four. Also have the honor of serving as Chair.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin. I serve as County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon. I am Macambridge County Commissioner Elaine Powell, representing Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, and I serve you at Large.
Good afternoon. Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Good afternoon. Deana Diorio, County Manager.
And if we can get staff introductions on both sides of the room, everyone. All right. Good afternoon. Anthony Trotman, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon. Leslie Johnson, Deputy County Manager.
Good day. Mike Bryant, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon. Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff.
Please.
Good afternoon. I'm Maitreer, Chief Library.
Good afternoon. Charles Thomas, I'm Chair of the Board of the Library.
P. K. Schmeylason, on Board of the Library.
Peggy Burden House, also has a Library Board.
Caitlin Mullen, Library Director.
Angie Myers, Library CFO.
Jonette Freeman, Human Resources.
Kim Henderson, Director, Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services.
Tom Harper, Director of Human Justice Services.
Danny Deal, Public Information Director.
Thank you. It looks like that's all the staff. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everyone. We've had a closed session item that has been added to the agenda. We are gonna have to clear the room. And while we're doing that, what I'll do is entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
For personnel matters. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Second.
All right. It's been moved, and we have a second. We don't need discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Ayes have it. So we'll let the room get prepared, and then we'll hear from
So we're going to make sure we go ahead and get started. Thank you all for your patience. We appreciate it. And I'm going to turn it over to the county manager to tee up the first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a presentation by the Charlotte Mecklenburg Library. The board had requested an update on their strategic strategies, their strategic vision over the next few years in light of the main library opening and some other movement in some of the other branches. So they are here to present that. And I guess I will turn the podium over to MT to kick us off.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for having us. This is a follow-up conversation from our board chair's presentation to you, the state of the library at your November 6th board meeting. I'm MT, your CEO and chief librarian. I'm joined by my colleagues Caitlin Mowen, a library director, and Angie Meyer, who is our CFO. We also have in the audience three of our board members, Charles Thomas, who is our board chair, Preeti, if you hadn't told me to read it, Shnivasan, thank you, and also Peggy Brookhouse. As I shared with you, we're going to present some work that we've been doing for about the last year, really earnestly starting in around August of last year, focusing on our staffing and collections. We're appreciative to county manager Diorio and also deputy county manager Leslie Johnson for their work and support of the library over the years. We're going to manage the time, Angie's going to do that, but Caitlin's going to kick us off with most of this, and Angie and I will tag team where needed, but Caitlin's starting us off.
All right, hello, everyone, and thanks for having us today. Today, let me see if this is, maybe I'm just clicking keyboard. Today, we're going to spend a little bit of time trying to develop a shared understanding of the challenges that the library is facing as we look ahead into the next couple of years. So first, we're going to dive into a little bit about how libraries operate in order to get that kind of foundational knowledge in place. Then we're going to focus specifically on staffing, looking at staffing data and looking at the issues that we're facing as main library comes onboard, as we're feeling the rolling impacts of the last 10, 15 years of library service. And then we'll spend some time on looking at solutions and next steps and how we've identified those solutions, what we're looking at looking forward. And then although the bulk of the time will be spent around staffing as a more complex issue, we'll be spending a few minutes at the end talking about library collections, but very high level, happy to follow up offline with any further information on that. So first, in order to understand the issues that the library is facing, it's really critical to understand how libraries operate. And so I'm going to move quickly through this. I know that we're on a time crunch, but it's very easy to think about libraries as retail businesses, and there's some truth to that, right? Like, we have brick and mortar buildings that we operate, we have schedules that folks have to be on shift, we have service points where we're having customers come in and get the answers that they need, get the services that they need, and we have materials that we're stocking on shelves, we're moving throughout the system, and we're buying and purchasing in order to meet the community needs. So that's a very true indication of how libraries operate. However, it's more than that. Libraries are also service providers, and I know you all know this as we've been talking over the last few years about the different things that the library is offering, but we do have programs that we offer for all ages. We provide a ton of one-on-one help in the areas of technology assistance, literacy development, workforce development programming. We also provide spaces for the community, so maintaining study rooms, meeting rooms, community rooms, early voting sites, all of those different spaces that we're managing and making available. And we work with partners to bring services that our staff are not equipped to deliver. So one thing about libraries, as you all know, is that we are trusted community institutions that are embedded within the specific communities that we serve. So we often have partners like 311, Novant, Charlotte Works, that are looking to deliver services directly to community members through the utilization of the spaces that we have in those communities. Libraries also operate outside of libraries, and this isn't news for you guys, and many of you or some of you were able to join us last week as we unveiled the new wrap on our mobile library, Molly, but we have a great deal of library programs and services that actually happen outside of library walls. And so that's what we call our outreach. So we work in the community to deliver programs and services where people are, and that can be anything from Molly rolling up and delivering materials, offering a storytime, to actually visiting a senior nutrition site in order to bring tech help skills in the moment, to visiting a jail and delivering workforce development programming to those individuals. And we also, of course, have a robust online presence as we live in a digital world and people engage both online and in the real world. And then finally, libraries operate in really growing and changing communities. There's some really different things about this world post-COVID that I think we all recognize it's impacting folks across the community, but the one thing about libraries is that they're the last place in the community that is free and open to any individual that wants to come in. We don't ask questions while you're there, if you're there to charge, use a restroom, receive heating and cooling, all of those are valid uses of the library. So along with that comes some extra considerations in terms of maintaining safety and facilities so that folks feel comfortable and welcome to walking in the doors, that we're structuring our services in order to maintain that safe and welcoming environment, and then that we're being really responsive. So as we've seen community needs grow, we've seen many more mental health issues arise, different folks moving into the community, we have folks walking in the door that have critical needs in that moment. And so we work to restructure our programs and services, to equip staff, to bring partners in that we're able to meet those high needs in that moment. So you might ask, who accomplishes all of that? That's a lot of different things in the library, and I'm going to focus first on the library services team. So this is a high-level organizational chart. It'll show you kind of folks that help to deliver programs and services to the community, everyone from collection management, the folks that buy books and get them ready to go out, folks in outreach, that dedicated team that is operating Molly and bringing other services to the community, our program leadership team who is designing and developing strategy for program delivery across the entire system in areas from adults, teens, children, workforce development, and early childhood learning, really focusing on how we can be holding our staff accountable to deliver high-quality programs wherever they are. But the bulk of our staff live in branch operations. We have over 400 staff, about 350 full-time equivalencies if you take part-timers into account, and those are the folks that are really doing the bulk of the library service day-to-day. So let's talk about what that looks like in the real world. You might think about library service in kind of the traditional sense, right? Librarians, library staff are helping customers with books and resources, getting the answers they need, getting the knowledge they need. But in the current world, as library service has developed over time, it's become more and more complex and intense to operate in a library setting. So now, we're not only helping customers with books, many of you, all of you know, I think, that we're helping customers who walk in the door with tech help. So somebody who wants to learn how to use Facebook to connect with their grandchildren, somebody who wants to understand a device that they got for Christmas, all of those kinds of offerings. In addition, we're designing, planning, and delivering programs, everything from a storytime for 100 kids or 190, like we had at the University City opening on Saturday, which was a crowd, let me tell you, up to one-on-one programs for somebody who's interested in pursuing citizenship and wants to understand that pathway. We're maintaining that safe environment, which means excellent customer service, vigilance, staffing desks in a way that folks are protected and taken care of, and ensuring that folks feel a part of the library and likely they belong there, because I think, as you all know, when folks are invested in the communities that they're in, they themselves will help to maintain that safe environment. We have folks who are delivering job application help, resume help, workforce development and upscaling programs on the daily, and then, of course, we have our individuals who are pushing into the community, not just that eight-person outreach team that I mentioned, but actually, if you look across our branches, staff in every location push outside of the walls of the library in order to deliver those programs to senior nutrition sites, senior centers, sorry, daycare centers, jails, all sorts, schools, all sorts of different community agencies. So to bring it a little more real world, I thought I would talk about just a couple examples of staff members who are real staff members who work in our system. So Abraar is a librarian for our teens at Mountain Island, and she's amazing, and she does amazing programs for teens. She runs a robust volunteer program throughout the year where she helps teens develop those career readiness skills, but she also serves as a manager on duty in the location and works on the desk and does all of the customer service things that are needed day-to-day as part of her job. Beyond that, Abraar pushes into some other program priorities and strategic initiatives in order to deliver higher-level service in some areas. She's the team lead on our workforce development team and was instrumental in designing a curriculum to deliver workforce development programming across all libraries, specifically targeted to international customers, customers who are recently released, and all sorts of different tech skills as well as soft skills that are needed in pursuing jobs and careers. She works on the Welcome CLT team, which specifically welcomes newcomers, and the College and Career Connections team, which is a specific program for teens to develop the skills they need to discern their next steps and know how to get there. So whether it's college, a career, a different pathway, working with teens to meet them where they are. Becca is an amazing librarian for children at Imagine On and regularly does storytimes for 70 individuals on a day-to-day basis. She's well-known for being an amazing storyteller. She also, beyond all of the work she does at Imagine On with maintaining a safe environment for kids, serving as manager on duty, all of those kinds of things, she also leads our frontline puppeteers team. So she brings a whole team and program out to different locations around the county, both libraries as well as community organizations, to deliver that program where folks are. She also ensures that our staff are trained and high-quality by offering theatrical training and storytelling training so that folks know that, so that we know that our folks are delivering amazing storytimes, amazing storytelling experiences as we offer those literacy development, trying to bring that contextual knowledge into the day-to-day. So those 400 folks who are operating our locations are not just operating our locations, is my point here, is they're pushing into areas that are playing to their skills, that are identified as system priorities, as county priorities in many cases, and ensuring that we are successful in those areas. Then you look beyond branches, and of course, there are other staff at the library system, so I would be remiss in not acknowledging that it takes a group effort to kind of accomplish everything we're talking about. Everybody from marketing and communications, innovation and equity inclusion, we talked a little bit about outreach, but also community partnerships, and then, of course, admin and support, which is a dense area that includes everyone from finance to human resources, logistics, the folks who move the books around the county, and facilities. So it takes this massive kind of complex organization in order to enable the complex service delivery that I talked about earlier. So we're going to dive deeper into staffing. I'm going to hand it off to Angie, who's going to talk a little bit about the data behind our staffing levels in libraries, and hopefully this helped ground the conversation a little bit. Thank you.
I'm short. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Caitlin. I am grateful to be here today. I am the non-librarian of the group, so I am going to quote an author by saying, "If you want to understand today, you have to search yesterday." This quote is from Pearl Buck, who was the first American female novelist who won both the Pulitzer as well as the Nobel Prize for Literature. And I say that because we do have to go back in time a little bit to see the library's story over the years, to see the story of growth, of demand, of resiliency, of flexibility, and all of the different ways we've become the 21st century library that Caitlin described earlier, providing all of those services that she mentioned. So we will start with headcount. Caitlin mentioned the 350 FTEs that we are currently at today. You do not need to memorize all these numbers, but what I want folks to see is the curve line. Obviously, we had the pre-recession time, we went through the recession, we have rebounded, we have built back, and we have been relatively stable for the last decade-ish, with a bump between '21 and '22 when we opened our Pineville branch, which was a wonderful day for our system. This is not a straight story of library funding, there is other, there are other details behind these numbers. We have realigned some of our own staff to fill and build up some of those system needs that Caitlin mentioned, such as in areas like third-grade reading and early childhood education, even our digital branch and our webmaster ability are some examples of places where we've had to push staff in different ways, but we've been hovering around that 350 mark for the last couple of years. Libraries aren't just about staffing levels, so let's talk a little bit about that same timeframe and our facilities. Our facilities did go from 24 to 20 during the recession, and that impacted about 29 direct, forward-facing, public-serving staff, but our hours, our service hours across the week went from over 1,560 down into the sevens, and now we're hovering there right around 1,260 service hours a week. This is a consistent schedule, Monday to Sunday, with set hours based on our types of libraries across the system. It's working really well for us. We are grateful and happy for this return to this service level and all that we are able to do with it. We have our 21 branches now with Pineville being open, so you know, the system is strong currently, and we're really, really grateful for that. Mecklenburg County continues to grow. This is not new information for the folks in the room. The blue trend line shows you, you know, when we eclipsed the million residents and continue to grow on into the future. Again, this is just layered over that library public service branch staffing levels that have been reasonably stable over the last few years. Now we are going to go deeper into that story of growth, of demand, of flexibility and resiliency. This here is circulation. This is when a library customer checks out or uses one of our print or digital items. We have lots of print, lots of digital, lots of electronic resources, and Caitlin will touch on this a bit more later, but again, what I want you to see here is the solid growth, the dip during the pandemic, and we are one of the few library systems who have completely rebounded to increase over pre-pandemic levels, and a lot of that is due to the investment of folks in this room through one-time county funds and our collection as well as the ARPA dollars. So again, we thank you very much for that. The customers are using it, they are coming, and we've had a banner year with circulation. Program attendance, similar story. Of course, during the pandemic, we had the dip, but we are back to an exceeding pre-pandemic program attendance numbers. The one thing I would say about these program attendance numbers, we're creeping towards touching 500,000 individuals, and yes, we do occasionally have 70 children in, or often have 70 children in a room at a storytime, but we're deepening those one-on-one programs, that technology help, the tutoring, the workforce development skills, some of those numbers that might not be driving our program attendance statistics through the roof, but our impact is really great, even with our tiny programs that are only touching one customer at a time. So the fact that we've been able to grow both, we're very proud of. And again, outreach, Caitlin touched on this. This is that small group of individuals that are pushing out into the community as well as the work that the branch staff do in their surrounding communities. Same story, steady growth, dip during the pandemic, and we are back to an exceeding those levels. So we've talked a little bit about all of this that we've been able to accomplish, and we showed you that our staffing was reasonably stable over the last couple of years, and you may say, well, how are you able to do all of this? Again, we're going to say thank you to the folks in this room. We have had a 10-year period of growth with our facilities as well. We closed and renovated our South Park Library, we reopened that, and then we did the same thing with North County, with South County, both regional branches, and then eventually our main library. So over the last eight or so years, we have been able to take those staff for 18 to 24-ish months, longer for Maine. So we've talked a little bit about all of this that we've been able to accomplish, and we showed you that our staffing was reasonably stable over the last couple of years, and you may say, "Well, how were you able to do all of this?" Again, we're going to say thank you to the folks in this room. We have had a 10-year period of growth with our facilities as well. We closed and renovated our South Park Library, we reopened that, and then we did the same thing with North County, with South County, both regional branches, and then eventually our Main Library. So over the last eight or so years, we have been able to take those staff for 18 to 24-ish months, longer for Main, while those buildings were being renovated and closed, and we were able to fill really critical gaps in our system and keep up all of that great work that you've heard about. Using Main Library as an example, while Main has been closed, we redeployed staff. Kind of the bottom half of my little picture is a lot of the surrounding branches that experienced a demand increase while Main is closed. We have folks at the LAC, our Library Administration Center, doing great work. We have a temporary facility at Founder's Hall. We have people helping with that collection budget and that circulation, those circulation numbers that are going through the roof, and we have people tremendously helping with outreach, as well as our mobile library. And what will happen when Main Library reopens is all of that capacity that we've been able to kind of beg, borrow, and steal from for the last 10 years that we are so grateful for, those positions will have to return to Main Library. In some areas, it may be a position or two, but I'll use outreach as an example. We have a three-person team dedicated to MOLI, our mobile library. Two of those three staff members that we recognized at the wrapping, re-wrapping ceremony last week, two of those three positions are on loan from Main. So that's 67% of a team that actually is going back to Main. That's just one example. Certainly, there are examples down at the branches that might be smaller percentages, but these staff are doing critical work. We have been, you know, this has not been any extra. This has been what's allowed us to maintain and continue the excellent service delivery over the last decade. So that is a little walkthrough of the data. I'm going to turn it back over to Caitlin to talk about some external studies and data that we've obtained to help support some more of this information.
All right. So we started realizing that this was a major issue, and we wanted to really approach this in a systematic way to make sure that we're being intentional in how we're solving the problem. So we were able to obtain a grant through the state library where we were able to hire a staffing consultant. She came in and she looked specifically at branch locations. What does it take to operate each of our branch locations, identifying where we might be understaffed or overstaffed, providing different recommendations in how to address this issue in order to be able to sustain the growth that we've been experiencing here at the library? She took an approach, a very staff-centered approach to start, hearing from staff directly through surveys, as well as focus groups, also looking at all of that historical data that Angie just presented on, and then also looking at benchmarking against state standards and other libraries. One of the things that she looked at was the North Carolina state standards. These are benchmarks that are set for North Carolina libraries. They have created these benchmarks in a lot of different areas. So it's everything from what do you do in your learning and development portfolio, to how many computers do you have in your system, how many square feet do you have, all of those kinds of things. For each standard, you can be rated essential, which means you have the basic level to adequately meet community need. Then you can have enhanced, which means that you have some aspects that might be better than basic. And then, of course, exemplary, which means that you are a standout, a national or state leader in that specific standard. So one of the standards that they do put forward, or I'm going to call it a benchmark, it's a benchmark that they put forward, is staffing, and it's the number of staff that you have per capita in a proportion. In evaluating our system, we found that Charlemagne Mecklenburg Library falls in the essential category. So we have just enough staff to adequately deliver basic library services. As you heard, we do way more than basic library services in all of the different programs and offerings that we have and that the community is looking for, and we've been able to meet that need through that kind of Band-Aid approach that Angie talked about with using redistributed staff to be able to meet those demands. However, there is a little bit of noise in the numbers, there's a little bit of apples-to-apples. Many North Carolina libraries are funded and operated in different models, and so some may not have the back-of-house that we have in terms of finance, human resources, marketing, all of those folks. And so we tried to look at how we could evaluate on a more community-focused base. So our consultant took the service populations for individual library locations and compared that to the staff that operate those specific libraries in order to try to get at a more focused number for each location. With that, we found that 10 of our libraries fall below that essential standard in having the staff that are needed to meet the needs of that community. This is a difficult number to read, and I think that we all would agree that Charlemagne Mecklenburg Library should be striving for far more than the basic level of services, and we can see the stretch in operating below that essential level in those individual locations. So as we talk about it, one of the things, as I mentioned, is this is a staff-centered approach. So as we looked at what we were hearing from individuals on the impact of those levels and of operating either at the essential level or below in some cases, what that felt like day-to-day, and I'm not going to read all of these to you, but the one I will read is when we're shorthanded, we degenerate into a library that only offers basic services, the opposite of a 21st century library. And really, that's what we're facing as we look at a shortfall in staffing, a potential shortfall in staffing and the impacts of the next few years, is the more that we become stretched, the more we need to constrict our programs back to that basic level and stop working and stop being able to meet those increased needs and demands that we're seeing walking in our door every day. So sobering issue, thinking about how we could move forward and find some solutions. The staffing, first, we looked at how is our workforce changing? So what is causing some complicating factors in who we recruit and the types of folks that we have? So Angie touched on this a little bit. We are seeing a huge increase in the amount of one-on-one support needed. That's folks who are walking in the door wanting to know, "How do I apply for this affordable housing option?" Folks walking in the door saying, "I need to have a telehealth appointment with my doctor. How do I do that?" And so those are folks that we don't tell them, "You got to schedule an appointment next week." We, you know, sit down with them then and work through that. In addition, we have lots of different programs, resume help, Reading Buddies, which works with children in developing literacy skills. All of those is a one-on-one approach is the most impactful, and it does require a certain type of individual to recruit, but also a good amount of staff time. We also looked at our changing demographics. We see the increase in need for services to seniors, for instance, and recognizing that we need to build out our portfolio in order to increase the number of services and programs that we have, specifically targeting and helping those groups function in a society that is growing and changing around them and ensuring that they're able to engage in every part of real life in today's day and age. But of course, there's other changing demographics, looking at those high needs, those mental health issues that we're talking about, looking at the number of customers coming from other locations. We currently offer materials in 16 different languages, but continuing to offer those and having the staff expertise to provide access to those. Bridges right into the need for more language use. So we have, we have a bilingual program in place, thanks to an investment from the county, and so we're able to recruit and employ employees and pay them to use their language skills. But we all know, with that many spoken languages in the county, an increase of those skills is more and more necessary. In the meantime, we've looked at and have onboarded technology solutions to try to enable that interaction in the meantime, which is pretty cool to see, but there is still that human kind of connection point and the need for the true bilingual abilities that we know that we need. And finally, thinking about what specializations are going to be necessary as we think about that ever-expanding circle of what library staff are being asked to do and push into, when are we recruiting folks who are career facilitators and developing those skills in our own staff? When are we recruiting folks who are experts at literacy development or tech development? When are we recruiting folks who are focused on social work and referrals and ensuring that folks are getting access to the points that they need? And it's all kind of part and parcel of the complexities of library service. So the staffing study dove into some proposed recommendations, and the first one should not be a surprise based on what I've been sharing, which is increasing staffing strategically over time. And that includes some various models for consideration, looking at the different things that drive the need for library staff in an individual location, everything from volume to maintaining safety, maintaining excellent customer service, and maintaining that outreach interaction outside of the walls. Along with that, we recognize that this is not an easy, like, answer, right? And so we need more than just increasing staffing as the answer. And so the study also dives into other things we can look at. Optimizing our pod staffing model is an example of that. So if you think about, like, a regional model, the easiest one to think about is in Commissioner Powell's district, as you look at the Huntersville North County Regional Library, supporting the Cornelius and Davidson, those smaller libraries that are in high-volume locations, and how do those three libraries work together to maximize the staff and their delivery of services to those communities? We also spent a lot of time looking at our full-time and part-time ratios. The library is very unique in that we have a large number of limited part-time staff, those individuals working 19 hours or less per week that are not benefits-eligible, but they are permanent employees of the library and often long-term employees of the library. And what that brings with it is some extra issues, and it's the higher turnover rate as those individuals either seek employment that brings benefits or often and more likely are promoted into full-time roles, creates kind of an ever-evolving turnover that we need to address, which is a capacity issue, as well as issues of staffing and maintaining those levels of staffing and equity in the benefits that we're able to give those folks. And so finally, we're looking at the existing staffing models and where we do have maybe some extra capacity that might be redistributed to be more impactful in other areas, and that might be within a location between children's and adults in order to meet the needs of that specific community, or it may be a branch-to-branch, and looking at the volume that's happening in this location or the demands that are coming in that location and shifting between the two. So we are kind of trying to look at all of these different approaches, not just the increasing staffing throughout the system. We also needed to expand our view beyond that staffing report. So with the increase in library operations comes a corresponding increase in everything else that we've been talking about. Everybody from human resources and technology and facility support through marketing and communications, innovation, and then we talked a lot about outreach today because it is such a critical component of our work, and it is a growing and in-demand. If you ask any library staff member what they say no to today because they don't have the time, it's some sort of an outreach interaction. And that's because that takes time, and it's a meaningful interaction, and it's an impactful interaction. And so unfortunately, it is something that we're very focused on in ensuring that we have a sustainable way to deliver both the services of MOLI and the mobile library, but also outreach in general throughout the system. We also have to look ahead to Main Library, which is an exciting thing to look ahead to. We are about two years away from having the doors open for that building. But if you'll remember, Main Library of the past was two and a half stories or so of pretty flat real estate, pretty stagnant spaces, lots of tables and chairs, books on shelves, and that was kind of Main Library. As we look ahead, we're going to have a five-story, very dynamic space. We're talking about 15 different meeting rooms that folks can use. We're talking about specialized spaces that are delivering services that we heard that the community needs, things like enhanced workforce development through our Opportunity Center, services to newcomers, people who are moving to Charlotte, technology help through our Technology Help Center, and of course, serving as the lobby for the theaters, which will bring with it enhanced foot traffic throughout. The other thing that we need to be cognizant with a five-story building is the unique nature of Main Library and its situation uptown. We serve everybody uptown. We do. And so that is, it brings with it some challenges and some opportunities in ensuring that we're maintaining a safe and welcoming environment so that folks who are walking in the door, regardless of where they're coming from, whether they're coming from a theater show or coming to charge their phone, they find a safe and warm or cool place to charge their phone and use a restroom and everything that they need to do. In addition, we have some expansion of service that we have on the horizon. So in the top corners, our Robinson Spangler Carolina Room, which holds our historical collections and genealogical research collections. And pre-COVID, pre-closure of Main Library operated on limited hours, so most folks who were using that space had to be there during work hours, like 10 to 6 on weekdays. And the intent with reopening Main Library is to make that a much more accessible space to anybody who wants to access that information and those collections, which will, of course, bring with it a corresponding increase in the need for staff to expand the hours of that part of the program of service, both in terms of help and research and access, but also in terms of the number of programs offered. Our genealogical programming has just taken off and is a hugely in-demand program of service right now, which is not surprising because I found out it is the second most popular hobby after gardening. I just found that out, and I thought that was a really interesting little tidbit. And I mentioned that we'll be serving as the lobby for the theater as well, which is kind of what I was conveying down below. So we're looking at all of these different things, everything from the historical data that Angie talked about into looking at the future, what we need in our organization, as well as Main Library, looking at what staffing study is supporting, and then what we need in all those other areas of human resources and technology and all of those kinds of things. And what we're doing is pulling all of that together into what are our final proposed staffing levels that we need in order to be a sustainable organization moving into the next few years. So right now, we're, I wanted to talk a little bit, we've kind of pulled everything together into those proposed staffing levels. And now we are working with Deputy County Manager Leslie Johnson and with County Manager Dina and all of their teams in order to work through the county manager's budget process. We anticipate that staffing is going to be a huge part of what we're looking at in our budget process. I don't think that's a secret. We are looking at phasing that out over a two-year proposed timeline in order to try to spread the impacts and be as both efficient and economical as we can be with onboarding folks when we need them in order to both open Main and plug the gaps that are left behind, to maintain service and maintain our operations as they are. In the meantime, as I said, there's not, all our ducks are not in that row. We're also looking at where we can make shifts now in order to solve some of the issues. So as vacancies occur, where we know we have some capacity that can pull, we're looking at moving those vacancies so that we're not impacting staff, but we are alleviating some of the pressures that are occurring in some of our really below operating levels areas. And then we're working through our strategic planning process. And so that, by that process, what we're trying to do is align library services and programs to what the community is seeking and asking for and needs. We are so grateful that through our strategic planning process, we got 4,000 responses from the community in what they're looking for in library services. And that's a gift, a gift of feedback, and that gives us the opportunity to make sure that the library that we're planning and the staff that we're apportioning around the system are focused on those things that we wanted to see developed. That strategic direction is coming and will be launched in April, but what we've been trying to do and working to do is aligning that with the strategic business plan process so that there will be no surprises for anybody in this room as we've worked through what is needed over the next three years. In the meantime, I'm going to close on the staffing, and I promise this portion is a lot shorter. In the meantime, what I will say is as we work through all of those things, this is a really, it's a heavy topic to talk about. It's, we recognize the environment that we're in, but we're also trying to be realistic about what we need and what we're struggling with as we look forward. So the realities of it is, is that an increase of staffing is going to be needed in order to maintain and meet the demands that we've been seeing from the community as we look out over the next couple of years. So I have about five minutes on collections, but I'm going to pause there, I think, to see if there's any questions before we dive into collections.
Please go through your whole presentation, and then what we'll do is take all the questions at the end.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So as we talk about libraries, challenges, looking ahead, staffing is the more complex one. Many of you have already heard about library collections, so some of this will be very familiar to you, so that's why we're going to kind of keep it a little bit shorter. First, much the same as talking about how libraries operate, we need to talk about what do we mean by library collections? So collections is a vernacular that we use for all of the things that are checked out at a library and all of the resources that are accessed at a library. So that includes the books that you check out when you walk in the door, DVDs, playaways, the Launchpad literacy tablets that we check out for children. All of those things are part of the collection. But in addition, we have eBooks and e-audiobooks. Many of you may be Libby users. All of those eBooks that we circulate that you might use and read on a Kindle or on another device. And then finally, as part of our collections budget, we have online resources that many people don't realize are encapsulated in that budget. So everything from Ancestry in order to enable that genealogical research, to access to Charlotte Observer, access to tutor.com, which gives K-12 and some college tutoring sessions for free to individuals from 2 to 11 every day, to LinkedIn Learning, which gives upscaling opportunities and tech skills opportunities for folks across the community. And all of those things are encapsulated and contained within the library collection budget and how we talk about library collections. There are some impacts to cost and availability of these collections, and it varies depending on the format. It's no secret that costs are rising in general, so I won't harp on that too much. But specifically in the publishing industry, we talk about the number of materials published is increasing as time goes on, when we've also had an increase in the number of languages and formats that are available. And then when you look on the digital side, of course, there are And then when you look on the digital side, of course, there are licensing issues and the need to ensure that we maintain availability to eBooks as time goes on. So this is a look at the collections budget. It should be fairly straightforward. You can see over time, we received our last big bump in the gray bar, which is Mecklenburg County ongoing funding. The big bump happened from FY18 to FY19. So you can see that's kind of the last big investment in the library collection in an ongoing way. But then over time, we've been able to increase funding through county one-time funds as well as ARPA funds. Those ARPA funds are really focused on workforce development resources as well as materials in other languages and language, and materials that helped, online resources that helped enable literacy development. What I would like to highlight over time is the line part of this is what shows circulation or checkouts and access of these materials. So it's a pretty clear story that when we're able to invest in these materials, the community uses them. There's, there's an immediate response, there's a demand that exists. If we're able to make these things available, they get used. And we've been blessed in the last couple of years to be able to invest in materials and make them available and see that increase. What we're facing in FY26, as one-time funds and ARPA dollars expire, is that cliff, that falloff. And with that falloff will be an immediate impact on the supply that we have to meet the demand. So basically, if we have less money, we can meet less customers' needs. So that's kind of what we're facing as we look ahead. This is not a new story and it's something we've been talking about for years, about the investment of collections needed in order to meet the needs of a community this size. If you think about customer impacts in the real world, it could mean something like losing access to an online database like the ones I talked about. Depending on the costs and the rising costs of those, we negotiate those contracts on an annual basis and anything might be subject to cuts at any moment. We also look at individual materials. So this is an in-demand book. Some of you may be familiar with it. The anxious generation is helping to understand teenagers today and people moving through childhood, right? And this is a real-world example of somebody who's on a Libby waiting list for this book. They just want to understand their kids better, right? And this is today's world. So they have a wait time of about ten weeks, and you can see there are about six people waiting per copy, which is about the ratio that we try to maintain for folks to balance investment in materials and meeting demand. If we have less funding, that ratio grows and those waiting times grows. And so this ten-week waiting period could turn into twelve weeks and fourteen weeks and sixteen weeks and eighteen weeks. And those folks are either giving up on that material altogether and not accessing it. They're purchasing it themselves and good for them. If they can afford to do that, that's great. But what that also does is erode the trust and faith that they can come to the library to get what they need. And that means that they're not coming in to get all of the other programs and services that we have to offer or sharing that those things exist with the community. So it creates an equity issue when we're not able to deliver on these high-demand items and this kind of, you know, willingness to wait in line versus having the resources to go outside. So as we face that reduction in funding, we know there's going to be cuts in the resources that we offer as well as increases in waiting times, which will mean real-world impacts to customers, basically from the beginning of the next fiscal year. So that is the end. Thank you for that. I wasn't sure how to handle the break, so I appreciate that. I think, oh, MT was going to close real quick.
So Caitlin moved us through that very quickly. It's what we live every day and it moves at a much slower pace than that, but thank you for listening to it. We are really, really happy to, for your attention to this matter, putting us on this agenda, but we're also happy to take any questions between the three of us, so.
Well, I suspect there'll be a lot of questions. Thank you for the presentation. Just to orient my colleagues really quickly, and I'm going to come to you, Commissioner Dunlap first. If you remember, we received a presentation from Board Chair Thomas, maybe about a month and a half ago. And during that presentation, it sort of sparked some other questions. I know I was one of the people that asked, hey, can we get a more in-depth presentation? And I think some, some others did as well. So this was a result of that, asking the county manager, could we get more in-depth in budget policy? So I just kind of wanted to orient not just us as colleagues, but also whoever may be listening. So with that being said, we'll go with our normal time, Madam Clerk, and we'll start with Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you. Quick responses with your question. Future, how many libraries are we expecting?
So with the facilities master plan, there was expected to be ten more libraries added to give us a total of thirty-one.
Okay, that wasn't what I was expecting. Okay, so ten. So let's just say the next three, three years, you got Sugar Creek coming back online.
Sugar Creek is our next one, opening.
The new, the one uptown, and what else?
There are proposals in for West Boulevard and also Nations.
Yeah, West Boulevard would be a move and then Nations Ford Road will be a new library added.
Okay, so four in the next three years. And so currently, three or four, currently, all library staff is in use to fully staff the current libraries.
Nations, correct.
So to, to staff the Uptown Library and to staff Sugar Creek and West Boulevard, you're basically looking at expanding to accommodate those libraries.
Yes, so our presentation today was focused on Main Library and the existing libraries. It does not take into account future expansions and new adds, which are kind of captured through the CIP process, but will be brought forward through the operating process each year as those libraries are brought on board.
So I noticed in, in your presentation, you didn't necessarily give us specific numbers. You basically said, if you want to operate at this level, then we need staff to accommodate that, but if you want to operate at a basic level, we need... So based on the, the libraries that you've just presented to us, what does that staffing model look like in terms of an increase?
We're looking at about eighty more staff in order to operate at the current levels and successfully operate Main Library.
All right, that's good for now.
All right. So next up will be Commissioner Townsend Ingram, Commissioner Meyer, then Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the, and how you presented it. It was, it was really good, great information to have. So just, you know, we've been talking about and prioritizing the future and the senior, the increase in the number of seniors that we're going to have in the next few years. And the, in thinking about the services that the library provides seniors, just as an example, are there opportunities within the staffing model and the recommendations that you got that would allow for maybe employee sharing, if that makes any sense to you? So there would be like maybe an employee that was a part-time equivalent for the library, but also worked for a senior center, something of that nature? And, and it could be in other instances as well, like maybe a part-time equivalent for CMS and then with the, does, does that make sense?
It does. We have some experience with that. We had an employee that was shared between us and Read Charlotte to drive third-grade reading efforts. It brings some complicating factors in terms of funding sustainability as well as those priorities and direction. And so it's something that we try to accomplish through partnership as opposed to true employee sharing, just because of that kind of bridge between government funding, nonprofit execution, or sometimes corporate execution can bring some complicating factors. Is there anything else?
I was going to say CTC and...
Yeah, I think the only place that we have that is, has been successful in that way long-term is some employees that we share between the library and Children's Theater of Charlotte, but that's specifically to operate Imagine On, so they have kind of a shared vested interest in the same facility.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It really was well done. So can, I've spoke with some, we spoke with some of you before the meeting. Can you let us know again how many people visited the main, the new University City Library on Saturday?
Yes, we had, don't quote me on the, this is, the semi-official number was twenty-eight-hundred people came into the door on the first day of University City.
Thank you.
Yes.
Twenty-eight-hundred people came into the library on one day, and that's a branch, that's a regional branch. That is absolutely incredible. So there's obviously a desire, a need, a want for our libraries. And I, for one, huge supporter of the libraries. And I want to say on slide forty, we have not increased the budget in seven years. And that's what I'm seeing. Is that correct? Besides the ARPA and the one-time, et cetera.
That's correct. In ongoing funding, there hasn't been an increase. We have been very grateful, and we've said every year that one-time funding is a way to close the gap. It just means that we're back again the next year and so...
Right, right, exactly. And I understand that. And I know you guys are grateful. And you've worked so well, you're contacting the commissioners and you guys are doing so wonderfully contacting us and, and having us understand what it is that you need. And I just want to give you a compliment on that. And I love the Twenty-First Century Library, and in my opinion, we need to get, we need to, that's the standard we need to get to if we're not there now. And since we all know money grows on trees, let's just do it. I don't see why not. Just kidding, Dina. That'd be my problem. That's true. So I just want to say, we should not be taking the library for granted. I know, I don't visit the library every day, every week, but I just know it's there and if I need it, I know it's there. And it is for everyone of all ages, whatever background you come from, wherever you live, it is something we, we all need and love. And I, I support you. Just note that, Dina. I support them. And I support your eighty new staff members.
Thank you so much. I will also add to that, just as a aside, that twenty-eight-hundred that visited us, we have to get the numbers of how many items were checked out that day because I imagine it hit us pretty hard and cleared the shelves for the next day, so we were really struggling. Yeah.
So Commissioner Meyer, can you run to the magic money tree downstairs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm going to go pick it all up.
Commissioner Griffin.
I'm going to have to quote my county manager from today. She was giving out advice, can't be all things to everybody.
That's what I said.
For everyone that follows us.
I, I clearly support the public library. I mean, I've said that for as long as I've been on this board because it's, it's a vital partner in the community. My, my question following up with Commissioner Dunlap.
Is it eighty when the, you need eighty folk to be basic, to be below basic? I mean, I'm looking at your slide of essential enhanced and exemplary.
No, those, that's current levels, is having ten that are kind of operating below basic. And if you look at us as a whole organization with all of the back of house, we're at essential. And so if you add the eighty, that will not move us into enhanced. What it will do is move us farther up in the essential where we're able to deliver more of what we've currently been delivering. So I want to be clear on that is I'm not putting...
Yeah, when I saw that chart, if we're below basic and you open up the new library, we're still below basic, that just got me, but we'll, we'll slide up closer to essential. The other, the other question I had for you, in terms of a lot of the services you provide, the, the, the community support, when people come in, you said something about affordable housing and other needs like that. Has there been an opportunity to try to see if those organizations could be supportive by staffing a specialist there? Or are you trying to create the librarians to also have a specialty to answer those community questions?
It's a good question, and we've had some different embedded services where we've brought specialists in like Charlotte Works and NC Works. We've had a partnership with them to deliver on the ground. The issue is that it's an in-the-moment need. And so what we look at libraries as is if you think about that traditional library reference desk, right? That person didn't know everything that was on page thirty of that book on that shelf over there. But what they did know was where to find that book and how to get the person the help that they needed to access it. And so we ask the same thing of our staff. I don't need you to be an expert in affordable housing, but if someone comes in and says, I have this form to fill out, how do I get the help I need in order to do it? That person is sitting down with them, helping them walk through the application, directing them to county services or other nonprofit partners that can help support the more expert interactions and serving in that reference model. So that's what I mean.
And Commissioner Griffin, we are looking at trying to embed social workers in our libraries as well because that's a great need for us. But again, the partnerships are sometimes challenging.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I yield my remaining time to... I usually have a lot of questions, but I support you. I support, yield it to you.
We'll go, we'll go back to you.
Commissioner Dunlap, but I clearly support you.
You didn't have to.
Well, you have no more time, sir. You'll go with the second round, how about that? Let's go with Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowd and Vice Chair Oldman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So slide forty, could you go to slide forty? And while you're getting there, I just want to say slide forty-one is very effective at getting the message across. I've seen that many times. But on, on forty, I might have just missed it. What was the Green Library adopted? What does that mean?
Yes, we, there have been times where we've gotten extra money from the ABC. We do get a very, you guys get a big amount, we get a really tiny amount from them that we're very grateful for. Whenever we have extra money that we were not anticipating, we almost always put it towards the collection, especially if it comes late in the year. So that is definitely a go-to for us. You will notice, we talked about the county funding being very stable after that bump in 2019. You will notice our state, which is the orange line, has also been very stable, so we're grateful for that. The ones that go up and down, the library, we've had very limited opportunity to throw dollars at collections over the last couple of years. That's where those ARPA and one-time funds have been so, so helpful.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, really, you don't have too many sources of revenue is the basic message there. So one thing I want to zone in on a little bit is on your part-time staff that is nineteen hours or less and receive no benefits. So can you just talk to us a little bit about, this is a concern I have in other areas, other departments that we have where we're using, using folks nineteen hours so that we don't have to pay benefits, which is just perpetuating a problem in our community. And I know, you know, there's reasons for that, I understand, but I, I really want to understand the eighty positions that you need. Those are full-time positions or tho, like how you're utilizing the nineteen hours? Folks, you know, I, I really want to understand that better. If you, if you didn't have to have the nineteen-hour folks, would, you know, would full-time folks work better? Like, help me understand that.
No, it's a good question. So included in our planning is actually a conversion project of some of our limited part-time staff to create full-time positions in kind of an hours-neutral approach, which of course brings with it a price tag to replace part-timers and bring in benefit employees. What we're looking at is a reduction, but not a total elimination of our limited part-time folks. We do have people who are teachers, retirees, parents who want that type of work, and so it's a good opportunity for those individuals, so we're not eliminating it completely, but we're looking at a reduction of about a third, and that's through attrition. I need to be careful to say that, I'm sorry. No impact to individuals or to people themselves, but rather as those vacancies occur, we would be looking at converting them into those full-time roles. And then the eighty is accounting for that conversion as well as bringing on more full-time roles. So we would not be looking to add a bunch of part-time roles through this project.
Okay, so the eighty is full-time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just...
Benefits?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just add that our part-timers, we do need them to help us with the schedules. We can't do it all on a full-time position.
Understood, thank you.
Commissioner Oldman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I first want to say that the library is an absolute jewel. It is a crown jewel of this community.
Thank you.
I mean, literally. I don't think there's anybody here who doesn't believe that and who doesn't see that you're due or that it's, you know, owed or that it, that you're definitely up to bat in any sort of, sort of consideration about how much you've been drawing down relative to some of our other partners, like, so I just want to be super clear about that.
Thank you.
You know, what I, what I'm trying to work through for myself is that we've been advised that we have growth, growth revenue of fifty million dollars. We have anticipated budget needs, just county budget needs, of sixty-one million dollars, which includes a fourteen-million-dollar deficit from last year, not even talking about CMS, CPCC, or the library. And so, you know, I just want the community to understand that this is not a conversation about the incredible and beautiful work you're doing or how much we love it, or, or again, whether or not you've been fairly drawing down over the years. It's about the numbers and trying to make it work this year. So I just want everyone in the conversation to understand that going into it. And... And, you know, I, like everybody, probably have some of my favorite library services that are maybe not super core library services. Like, for example, I'm really into workforce development. You know, I really, you know, there's a bunch of programs that I think are amazing that you have that don't go to making sure that a book is available and that don't go to making sure you have a librarian who can keep that book available. You know, you need the book and you need the librarian. And so I guess what I'm hoping is, as you go forward with the county manager and working this out, you know, we're looking at, we have charged the county manager to scour the budget for things that may be fantastic, but just have a lower yield to, you know, outcomes or might have not be an absolute core service we have to deliver. And, you know, I want to, I want to say publicly that you might need to do the same thing. It's painful, especially when they're wonderful things that people love and that, you know, what could be wrong with that? Nothing's wrong with X, fill in the blank, you know? The question is, how are we gonna, you know, I'm really disturbed by the delay with popular, you know, with books people want. It's not your fault. But we have to focus, you know, Councilman Graham, make the main thing the main thing. And if that means difficult cuts for all of us in this year when we have less money to go around, you know, I want to give you the cover to say, you know, I'll understand if you have to come forward with some things people love that, you know, just so we can be sure that people don't have to wait 10 weeks to get a book. We just, I mean, we just don't want that. So thank you, and I appreciate you deeply.
Sure. That's duly noted, and we recognize the position that the commissioners are in to address the budget. And we received our instruction and guidance from the Budget Office and County Manager last week, and so we're starting to work on that as well. But again, today's presentation was to help set the stage for where we find ourselves right now.
Yes, sir. Thank you again.
Thank you. Let me yield 60 seconds of my time to Commissioner Dunlap because I know you had a follow-up.
Yeah, I did. Okay, so where are we in terms of paying for the new library? Are all the funds raised yet?
So we are about $11 million more to go on the private side. The foundation is raising that.
All right. And then, on average, what's the FTE cost?
Four.
What I can tell you that is, I looked at this this morning, so forgive me for not having the numbers in my head, but 97% of our county adopted budget goes to buildings, bodies, which are people, books, and technology. So 97 out of every $100 y'all give us is people, buildings, books, and technology. The other 3% is everything else, programming, trying to think, office supplies.
So you don't have an average cost per person, per employee?
Eighty people.
Staffing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Average cost per person is probably around 80K all in because the range of salaries, we have many that are entry level and then a handful of managers and senior manager level.
One last question. And so these employees that you need because of the time period in which the libraries are completed and the staffing increase, it's incremental growth. You don't just need 80 people. So tell us how that works.
It would have been incremental growth if we weren't plugging along the last eight to 10 years with these closures and filling the gap with those folks. Because we haven't been adding on an incremental basis, it's going to hit more all at once. So we're working to stage it out over a two-year process with the final budget impact felt in the third year. But it will feel much more all at once than you might expect. And it's because of losing that Band-Aid that we've been using along this way.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Townsend-Aguirre.
So you answered part of what the question that I had with regard to the foundation because my question was, and I know that it would be a fool's errand to even contemplate using any kind of federal or state grant funding support at this juncture, but how much of an impact? And can you lean on your board to do that fundraising for the programming part so that you could at least get some grant funding? Do you have grants in the pipeline? Do you have a dedicated grant writer? Talk to me about the foundation portion.
So our programming budget, thanks to the county, we did receive an increase about a year and a half ago. Our programming budget for our system is $424,000. So that's what we use to execute all of these programs across the system. We do get private dollars to support specific programs, things like Summer Break, our Epic Fest Literary Festival for kids. So we'll receive private dollars for those. Those flow through the foundation. But we are operating on a very small budget for programs across the system.
And the only thing I would add to that is that that foundation of staff of four people is currently working on raising that additional 11 million. Once that's complete, they are planning to resume supporting some of the services and programs.
You said 11 million?
Yes.
And that's factored into your budget for the next fiscal year or for what portion of?
That's all for the Common Spark campaign, so that will close the gap on the fundraising for the new main library building, as well as some system-wide initiatives that were built into the campaign. But it has nothing to do with annual operations, unfortunately.
All right. So a couple of things. One, let me just say thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation and for the visibility. I would agree with all of my colleagues, the critical role that you all play in this community. We respect that. MT, you've done a fantastic job. Thanks for being so responsive when I'm sending you things.
In the middle of the night.
In the middle of the night, right.
Tell it on him.
You had to say it, but yeah, you're right. Just a couple of things real quick. I'm going to do some quick hitters. Well, before I get to the quick hitters, one, I do want to reiterate what the Vice Chair said and what others have alluded to with respect to the budget considerations, particularly as we look at FY '26. I do appreciate that you all have a two-year sort of ramp plan. I suspect that, I hope there's, you guys are looking at maybe stretching that out a little bit more. But I understand the crisis that you're in. But I certainly appreciate you coming in with that, with that ramp plan. I think that makes sense. And I know OMB and our CFO and manager will help navigate that. I am curious, I have to ask, where are we at with Plazamidwood? I didn't get an update on that. The other thing is, I'm curious to understand, when you look at the libraries across our system, whether they're in a high-opportunity area or a high-need area, on a percentage or per capita basis, do we see the same level of use regardless of area when you look at it on more of a, I'm going to say percentage basis for lack of a better word?
So first, Plazamidwood, are you asking about the closure, the renovation? Is that what you're asking?
The renovation, yes.
Yeah, so Plazamidwood will close on February 22nd and will be closed for about three months. That is for an HVAC improvement, roof renovation of the restrooms and the parking lot. And so we're excited to get some needed enhancements there. So yes, thank you for highlighting that in this setting. I do actually really appreciate that. We'll be popping up some services using Molly and the new vehicle Mila in the meantime, as well as directing individuals to all of the surrounding libraries for service.
Thank you.
When we look at usage, it's really difficult to measure apples to apples. So we have different usage statistics that we use, everything from circulation to door count to program attendance to computer usage, Wi-Fi sessions. And what we find is that it varies greatly. So if we're in a more high-need area, the circulation may be much lower, but in-house use, just door count and computer usage might be much higher. So it's difficult to kind of compare apples to apples in what folks are looking for when they walk in the door in a quantitative way.
Well, and I appreciate that and respect that. I think one of the questions that I ask all of our partners is, I'm always curious about the application of equity. And when you, when you look at it, a lot of times in high-opportunity areas, you may get a lot of traffic, but they have access to a bunch of other resources. So when we look at the high-need areas, I just want to make sure that there is a, there's a focus on an application of equity where, in the high-need areas, where the resources are not there and they need more of that high-touch contact, that there is somewhat of a lens or focus, not somewhat, but a lens or a focus in those areas, and we take those things into consideration.
Absolutely. And when we prioritize through the facilities master plan for submissions to capital improvement plan, that's what we keep in mind, is balancing library deserts and those high-need areas, whether we're looking at corridors of opportunity with the cities kind of look at things, or the impact we're seeing in when we're delivering services in those areas through Molly or other settings. We experience it firsthand what that demand is. And some things we can't deliver in those settings, we can't give a safe place, but we can take that kind of feedback into account and use that to help inform decision-making on where we need to bring library services as a whole.
Understood. All right. Well, thank you all so much. MT, did you have any, were you about to say something?
I was just going to thank you again for your time and appreciation for the consideration of our presentation, but also recognizing the big job that you have ahead of you. We wish you luck on that just as much as you've given it to us. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you all. All right. Madam Manager, I think we have our friends from the justice system here.
Yeah, we have Sonia Harper's here. She's going to do a presentation to you on how we invest in the justice system here in Mecklenburg County. There was a question about that when we were doing topics of interest. So she is here to make that presentation, but we do have our colleagues from the courts and the AOC, trial court administrator, public defender, as well as our DA here to answer any questions you may have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sonia.
All right, thank you. And I was going to introduce our state partners, but Dina, you've got that covered for us, so we'll jump right in. So I'm here today just to really kind of give you an overview on the county's investments in our state agencies. And this came about as a, really kind of as a, posed as a question as we're entering into the upcoming budget process. And I want to just really kind of start off by sort of laying sort of the land here as to, there we go, lay the land here as to, you know, how the state really kind of defines the county's responsibility and funding our, you know, our state partners. And really sort of the beginning of this starts with Article 4 within the North Carolina State Constitution. And this language appeared roughly around 1962 when the state of North Carolina decided to move towards a centrally governed court system. And at that time, it was indicated that the state would be responsible for the operating costs of the courts, and counties would continue to be responsible for facilities. The, as we kind of move along, there's additional language within the general statute that, again, provides guidance to counties as to, you know, what it is that they can provide for support for, you know, for the state agencies. And so when we look in the general statute and that 7A 300, that there is where we see the language that indicates that judicial department shall be paid for with state funds or funds that are provided from local governments. So that allows for local governments to, again, to apply, to provide, you know, some funding, again, as long as that falls in line with additional statute, 153A, which we'll get to here in a minute. When we kind of go further along in the general statutes and we get into that 7A 302, that is, again, where we see that language that identifies that counties are responsible for providing the facilities. And those facilities indicate, you know, are, those are our courthouses, it's provide space for our juvenile court counselors and other sorts of support staff. As we move kind of further along in 153A, this here is where we see the language, again, that allows counties to provide funds for support of those things that are related to threats to public safety. So again, this right here gives us that language where it indicates that counties, we can apply funds to the local justice system in those things that are really kind of connected to criminal, criminal cases and criminal functions of the court. And again, I know this is a lot of statute, but as we move kind of further along here, as we get back into, into, into 7A, we see there, this is the language where we see, where county or city funds can be used to support, and the language from the statute is secretaries for superior court judges. This statute here is what allows the counties to be able to invest in our trial court administrator's office. As we move down into 7A 64, this is where it, where it indicates that, again, we are allowed to provide funding for temporary assistant district attorney positions. And moving down into 102E, this here is the language that allows us to provide funding to the clerk of court to support additional assistant and deputy clerk positions. Again, as we kind of move further along in Chapter 7A, we see further language there that allows us to provide salary supplements for judicial officials, but these judicial officials outside of those that are elected. So this is where the language comes that indicates that we are prohibited to funding, you know, judges, primarily judges, magistrates, and the elected DA. That language there also is what allows us to provide the salary supplement, which I'll get to, you know, here in just a few minutes, because we do provide salary supplements for attorney positions here within our county. And again, as we move further along into Chapter 7A, this right here under 498.7, this is where we see that language that allows counties to be able to utilize funds to assist temporary assistant public defenders. And so this is the language that allows us to do direct contracting with the state's indigent defense service to support the public defender's office. So when we get into really kind of determining, you know, the amount of, or the amount of support or looking at, you know, the actual number of positions that are needed within each of the state agencies, the North Carolina Office of Administrative Office of the Courts has a workload formula that they utilize to make that determination. This formula was developed by the National Center of State Courts, and it is something that the AOC applies each year. This formula uses court filing data from the previous three years. So the numbers I'm getting ready to show you here in just a moment are based on filings for fiscal year '22, '23, and '24. And these are also, this is data that the AOC published just in this past July of '24. But again, it uses that three years of fiscal data, and they conduct these, this workload formula, apply it to the district attorney, clerk of court, magistrates, and district and superior court judges. And they do this for all 100 counties and within North Carolina. The indigent defense services office conducts a separate workload analysis for the public defender's offices within the state of North Carolina. And as we kind of move through, I will say the, the most recent data the IDS had available was for 2019. So those numbers that I'll present aren't as, aren't as update, updated as those that are provided by the AOC. So again, since, since the statute indicates that counties, we, again, can provide support to support criminal processes amongst our state partners. And again, the AOC provides numbers for positions, needed positions, based on the workload formula, based on criminal filings. I wanted to just kind of give you a snapshot of the filings here, the criminal filings here within, within Mecklenburg County. And so the AOC had reported for fiscal year '23, '24, that in superior court, again, criminal cases, we had just under 6,000 criminal cases filed in Mecklenburg County last year. AOC has also indicated that that number is a, we have seen that number of superior court criminal cases filed in Mecklenburg County decrease by a little over 58% over the last five fiscal years. So we have seen some decline there. And then when we're looking at cases that are disposed within the jurisdiction, again, within superior court criminal cases for the previous fiscal year, we had just under 11,000 cases disposed in superior court. As we move and take a look at district court filings, you know, again, this right here is where we, you know, see numerically heavier volume. For the, again, this past fiscal year, we had just shy of 70,000 district court criminal cases filed. And again, when we're looking, when AOC is looking at their data for the last previous five fiscal years, that is a decrease of 35 and a half percent over the last five fiscal years. And when we're looking at district court criminal cases disposed within, again, the last fiscal year, we saw just shy of 75,000 cases disposed of in, in district criminal And so another kind of, you know, piece, again, just to kind of get a snapshot of volume of cases in Mecklenburg County, you know, the AOC has also been tracking pending court cases within each of the, each of the 100 counties. And they've been doing some of this work sort of tied to how they've been tracking backlog numbers across a different judicial districts. And so again, when we're looking at just sort of overall pending court cases, AOC is reporting that pending felony cases and pending superior court cases, pending superior court with highest misdemeanor charges have decreased in Mecklenburg County throughout the time period of February of 2020 through December of '24. And then when we're looking at pending district court criminal, including infractions, again, pending district court criminal cases, pending DWI's, AOC is saying that there has been a slight increase in those cases overall. But again, when we kind of bring everything together and look at all of those criminal cases, including the felonies, the district courts, the infractions, DWI's, and then looking at the superior court with a high charge misdemeanor, overall, the state is indicating that there has been a decrease in those number of pending cases overall here within our county. of pending cases overall here within our county. So kind of looping back around to like the AOC's workload formula, these numbers that you see here are the court partner needs based on filings per the AOC's workload formula. And so when we look here, you know, kind of going through the column here, our first column here is the AOC identified needs. So as AOC has calculated their workload formula, these are the numbers that they have determined are the, what the staffing needs are for each of the offices, again, based on the workload formula for the past three years of filings. So we can see here that the AOC has identified that our clerk of court does need 249 positions. Currently, the state is funding 212 of those, and the county funds eight positions in our clerk's office for a total of 220 positions. And so, again, we do see that there is, you know, some additional need there. Again, according to the AOC's workload formula, they are identifying 84 positions needed for our district attorney. They are currently funding 62. We currently fund 25, bringing the total to 87. The breakdown also within the DA's office also indicates the number of legal assistance or support. And so you can also see here what the AOC is identifying, what the state funds, and what the county funds. And so, again, on that line there, we are seeing that they are slightly under. Magistrates, this is a space where you all have done a lot of advocacy to be able to increase the magistrate capacity here within the jurisdiction, and we have seen the number of magistrates increase over the last couple of years. But again, based on the AOC's workload formula, we are in need of 50 magistrates here within Mecklenburg County. There are currently 38 and 1/2 funded. And again, counties, we are not permitted to fund magistrate, so the, the only magistrates are of those that are state-funded. For district court judges, again, taking a look at the workload formula, based on what the, what the state is funding and based on their formula, we are slightly above the number of district court judges that are, that are needed. Again, like magistrates, we are not able to fund judgeships. And then also, when we're looking at Superior Court judges, we are showing, again, based on the workload formula, that we are slightly, Superior Court judges within the jurisdiction. I do also have here added the trial court administrator's office. The AOC does not conduct workload formulas for the TCA's offices in North Carolina, but I did want to indicate here that the county, we are currently funding for Ms. Calloway's With the indigent defense services, like I said, the most recent data that IDS that the state had was from 2019. In that year, they did conduct their analysis, and for Mecklenburg County, they identified that our public defender's office needed just shy of 94 positions in order to be able to support the workload. But right now, the public defender's office only has 60 funded position, and that's a combination of both state and county-funded positions. And within our public defender's office right now, we, the county, we provide funding for eight assistant public defenders, as well as eight support staff positions. And I think the one thing I would also kind of just point out a bit within, with, with IDS, with indigent defense services, is also, although we have not seen an increase in number of public defenders in existing offices, a lot of IDS's advocacy over the last couple of years has been to actually increase the number of public defender offices within North Carolina. And if memory serves me correctly, last year, we did see the state provide approval and funding to open public defender's offices in eight additional judicial districts in the state. So I will say, kind of moving into this, when we're looking at funding, what is needed as opposed to what is funded, we are not unique in that Mecklenburg County, our, our measures are, you know, that the state is not fully funding according to its own standards. You know, this is something that you see in most all counties across North Carolina. And just for comparison, I did pull, you know, Wake County to provide you those numbers. Wake County does not provide funding for positions for its judicial partners. So all, all positions within Wake County are, in fact, provided by the AOC. And so what you can see here, again, based on the AOC's, AOC's data, is, again, you can see that there is, again, really kind of gaps, for the most part, between what is identified by the AOC is what is needed, as opposed to what it is funding. And again, I've got sort of the asterisk there for the public defenders, because, again, that is 2019 data. That's the most recent that IDS had available. But again, you can see that, yeah, they're very similarly into the same boat that we are when it comes to need, as opposed, need versus what is being funded. But again, they are fully state-funded. So next here, I just wanted to really kind of provide you a breakdown on what you are currently investing in your state partners. So right now, for fiscal year '25, the county is providing collectively our state partners over $8.5 million to be able to support their functions. The really kind of the breakdown in this is, we do provide, really, what's identified as one-time funding, but we have provided that more than one time, is roughly $144,000 to be able to support the public defender's office. And this right here is attached to really kind of the storage of, of, of cases within his office. Again, we are required to provide facilities, but those facilities have to be able to meet their capacity. And so, again, there are retention requirements for, for cases. Right now, our public defender's space is not adequate enough to be able to store all of his case files, so we do have this one-time, well, not really one-time, but kind of a recurring expense, whenever it is that he is needing to kind of move cases for storage and then electronic scanning. The, the county, we do provide salary and benefits for one full-time employee that is currently assigned to the district attorney's office. That individual is truly a county employee and falls on the counts for CJS, but it is considered what is a legacy position. It's something that we've provided for some time, but it is, you know, funded fully and provides administrative support for the DA's office. The bulk of that 8.5 million dollars does fall under contracts. And there are three primary contracts that, that the county has with the state agencies, and those contracts sit with CJS. And those are for the AOC, IDS, and then what's referred to as the supplement. The AOC contract covers all of those positions that we fund for the district attorney, the clerk of court, and the, the trial court administrator. The IDS contract is separate and apart. That is where we fund all the, the positions for the district attorney, or, excuse me, for the public defender's office. The supplement contract is separate. And, you know, the county, and we have recognized that, you know, I think this is one of the things with the state, is just, you know, the salary for a position is the salary for a position regardless of where that position is. And of course, you know, it is more costly to, to live here in Mecklenburg County than it is in some other parts of the state. And so to be able to sort of offset some of those, offset some of, some of those cost of living, you know, additional costs, we do provide a salary supplement of roughly $9,500 per attorney position. And that's both the district attorney and the public defender's office. So whenever they extend an offer to an attorney, whatever that state salary is that's offered, we add roughly $9,500 on top of that to be able to provide, again, that supplement, to be able to, again, help with attorneys to this area. But again, we recognize that the cost of living here is different than where it is in other states. The other remaining $823,000 is really kind of scattered in different object codes throughout the budget. And that $800,000 supports a variety of different things. So some of that is applied towards the jury management system, which is also supported by the county. There's annual costs associated with that. This is also where some of the support comes for some of the digital dockets and things that we have in the, in the courthouse. This also is also general building maintenance, so there's just a different variety of things that kind of fall into that bucket there. But overall, your annual investment for FY '25 is sitting at over $8.5 million. This next slide here really kind of shows you a bit of a comparison to other counties. And this right here is for fiscal year '22, and this is the most recent data that AOC had available for this. And when you kind of take a look at comparison to the other counties, you know, we are, we are funding at a much greater level than anyone else in the state is. I think, you know, one of the things that's also very unique about our funding is, in fact, that, you know, we are funding a multitude of positions within each of the offices. And when we reach out and have those conversations with, you know, other counties, and we take a look at their investments, they tend to take the position to where their investments are much more targeted. So they tend to fund things within those state agencies' offices that are directly tied to something the county either has as an initiative or a vested interest. And so when you look here, you know, we can look at like Brunswick County, their funding goes directly to their teen court program. When we look at Buncombe, Buncombe provides funding to support their jail prosecution team. When we look at Catawba County, the investment there is to specifically support their veterans' treatment court. When we look at Cumberland, again, they're looking, their funding goes directly to the jail diversion program. Durham County, their funding supports a, a gang prosecutor for the district attorney's office. When we look at Forsyth County, their funding is specifically to support their driver's license restoration program. Johnston County, their funding goes directly to support domestic violence staff in the district attorney's office. Lenore County, their funding is specifically for the recovery court. So again, each of those counties makes a targeted investment in those things that are, again, tied to, that the county itself has, has a vested interest or an initiative tied to. I will kind of, you know, with this here, and again, I will point out that this slide here is just the AOC contracts. This does not include the IDS contract. Again, this graph here is just those things that fall, fall under the auspice of the AOC. But what I will also point out is when we look at public defender's offices, and I think right now there are PD's offices in roughly about 40 of the 100 counties in North Carolina. Of those, the only two counties that I'm aware of that make direct investments in their public defender's office are Buncombe and Durham. Durham County provides support to be able to support an assistant public defender for his first appearance process. And when we look at Buncombe County, their county funding goes to support a social worker in their public defender's office. Buncombe County is also a MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge site, and I am aware that they have used some of their, other SJC grant funds to support a assistant public defender position for first appearance there in that county. When we kind of look at just overall expenditures in the contracts that we have here, you can kind of take a look at this here. This right here is the unexpended budget for the past 10 fiscal years for the support that we're providing for the, for the AOC partners. So when you look at the, the orange lines here, this shows you the original budgeted amount, you know, amongst those contracts. The blue line there indicates the amount of turnback, and then the gray line there just gives you the indicator of the percentage of turnback. And so year after year, we have seen funding be, not be expended across those contracts, and then ultimately return to the county at the, at the end of the year. So kind of just providing, just a, you know, sort of, again, a breakdown of the positions that are tied to that $8.5 million investment. Overall, across the agencies, the county, we are currently funding 86 positions amongst our state partners. Currently, right now, as of, you know, this month, 79% of the, 79 of those positions are currently filled. 26 are being paid under the contracted budgeted amount. 18 are currently being paid at the contracted budgeted amount, and 35 are being paid over the contracted budgeted amount. So when you look at sort of the contract, we have what we refer to as the appendix A, and it kind of has their, you know, a salary number. And that's really there for budgeting purposes, more so for us. Our state partners have the ability to offer whatever salaries they would like to offer. They just cannot overexpend the amount that's within the contract. And so there is flexibility, you know, that is provided there for them. And so overall, that right there are really the, the, the highlights and the overview. So I'll stop there if there are any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Sonia. Before we go to my colleagues with questions, I know we have some of our partners that are here, and I do want to extend the opportunity to give you guys 90 seconds, if you wanted to just add anything or give us any visibility to something, since you did trek over here. Would you guys like to take, you don't have to take the opportunity, but I want to be able to give you that opportunity.
I will, but I figure I'm not the only one.
Give me one, give me one second. Commissioner Dunlop.
I wondered if they wanted to hear what our concerns were before they responded.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's a good, that's a good point. But we'll, we'll give you guys some runway. It'll be limited, but we'll give you guys some runway after we go through this. So here's the lineup. We're going to go with Commissioner Griffin, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, Commissioner Altman, and then we'll go to Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Harper. Can you go to slide 13? One of the, the comparison with Wake County, we used to compare Wake County with Mecklenburg County in terms of test scores. And when we had higher test scores in Wake County, we clapped our hands. And the reason for that is Wake County is a suburban county. Mecklenburg is an urban county in terms of the makeup of the, of the population. Most of Charlotte makes up most of Mecklenburg County, as opposed to Raleigh doesn't make up the majority of Wake County. So the, the conditions for crime and poverty are a lot higher. For example, the percent of African-American kids in public schools is far greater in Mecklenburg. So crime is, is somewhat different here in Mecklenburg County. And I would think that the need in the criminal justice area would be a little bit greater. And so when you look at the number of clerks, the deficit was 20, 29, I think, on one of your slides. In terms of processing cases, particularly juveniles, I would think that quicker that you process cases, it would have a deterrent on a lot of juvenile crimes. So I'm just trying to get some feedback on just the differences in Mecklenburg County's criminal justice makeup as opposed to Wake County would be, would be helpful. And number 16, you say they give money back. So is that like lapped salaries or something in terms of if they don't spend funds, they have to give it back to the county? And if so, I wish we could do that for the school system. The other piece is the new, the city council last night talked about public health as a, crime as a public health issue. I think we, we have a lot of work to do here in Mecklenburg County to improve, and I would certainly like to hear if, if your opinion, or somebody's opinion, if the resources that they have now adequate to, to do their job.
So I think, kind of starting with, with Wake County, I think, you know, maybe the, the important thing to keep in mind here is what the workload formula is. It is based on the number of criminal filings. And so, again, it's the volume within the courts. And so that is how that is calculated. I think there are definitely some things that are unique about Wake County. They tend not to have as great a number of filings as Mecklenburg. You know, again, the, yes, there are some geographic and some demographic differences there, but again, the formula is based on the filings, the volume within the courts. And so I think, you know, again, those numbers are, are, again, based on those calculations. I think for your second question, for the amount of turnback, turnback is, sometimes it is lapped salaries, so if there are vacancies, some of that funding is turned back to us. But there is also turnback that come from other lines within, within the contract. I think when we look at turnback and we look at lapped salaries, you know, if a position is vacant, then again, that lapped salary is turned back, but that also results in turnback out of the supplement contract. Because if those positions are not filled, then there's no supplement applied. And so, but again, turnback can occur from multiple places within those, within the contract. I think, you know, again, when we're looking at, for your last, second, your final question there regarding the city council, public health, and where we're adequately funded, you know, I don't think that that's necessarily a question where we have sort of like a yes or no response. When we're looking at crime and criminal behavior, I mean, there's lots of reasons why that occur. And when you really kind of delve in and look at criminal data, there tend to be lots of different buckets where offenses and, and things can kind of fall. And so I think, you know, that, it is, it, it is a bit complex. I think when we're looking at sort of, you know, sort of crime in general, we're looking at that locally, you know, there are, we are seeing declines in a lot of areas of, of crime, but we are seeing, you know, some increases in some things kind of holding steady in some areas. Gun offenses and homicides being one of those. I think, you know, if you're wanting to really sort of make any leeway in that space, there has to be, you know, real conversation about the role of firearms and potential sort of ways to address that.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wow, that was a, a, a statement that I'm, I'm drawing some boxes around firearms. We need to talk about firearms. I mean, what is our state doing and our, and our, our national scene just, you know, most recently around this topic? But, so I want to piggyback a little bit. But, so I want to piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Griffin said because, I mean, this presentation, I feel like you wouldn't really get the gist that, that we are the only large, really large urban county in the state. Like, we're different than the rest of the counties. And so when you put us on a graph, you know, with all those other municipalities and counties, it's, it's, there's no comparison, but there is no comparison because we're very, very different. And so on slide 10, when it talks about the decrease of, of cases, you know, and you mentioned this also in your answer, you know, we know that there's been a different way of reporting cases, right? And so, you know, they're bundled, or they're, they're somehow, they're different now with E-courts. And so I think it's a little bit misleading. It kind of makes it seem like, well, there's a lot less to deal with than there was. So I think, you know, for the public, you know, I think one of the things that I hear most about is public safety and that being a concern. And, and in my view, you know, this is an area that our state is failing us once again, just like education, where they're woefully underfunding. And we, as a county, have to decide, or do our constituents value this, you know, bucket of money, you know, to provide public safety? And I think my constituents would say, yes, this, we do need to invest in this. And so when I was looking at slide 11, let's see, where's the one that shows the, oh, shoot, I lost which number it was. The, the amount of funding, oh yeah, slide, the one with the orange bars, 16, sorry. We, so in 2024, where, where the, the, I'm sorry, this, I just got confused with my, my graphs here, which one I wanted to look at. Forget that. What I want to say is that we're a different county. I think we need to look at different, not compare ourselves to Wake and, and counties that are suburban counties or rural counties. It's so much different. And we have to support our court system. We have to get these numbers up for the clerks. We need all that backup support because that is the way that I think we, we can impact public safety in the most effective way through our court system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Altman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm, I, you know, for me, this is about the orderly administration of justice. If you don't have enough court staff to process cases, then people are being taken out of the community for longer than they need to be, not having their cases heard, not having their, you know, they're being adjudicated innocent or guilty and beginning to serve their time, they're away from work, they're away from families. It's, it tears at the fabric. And, you know, it's not the orderly administration of justice, which we owe people. We owe the community to have a functioning court system. But I am also really looking at the difference of the local support comparison, if you'll bring up that, that one. And I, I mean, obviously, Mecklenburg County is different than other counties, including Wake. But, you know, I would be interested in a comparison of processing times and, you know, days to adjudication and just some sort of high-level metrics to really compare outcomes, to see if there are any lessons, county manager, that we can draw about the investment. I mean, I know it's something I want to do. I know it's the morally right thing to do, but I, there are a lot of important things to do. And I continue to try to be sure that we're using every dollar for the highest yield for all of our goals. And, you know, another thing I would be interested in knowing is, over time, you know, we continue to subsidize the state with functions they're supposed to do. And how is that metric increasing over time? Like, you know, are we continuing to increase the percentage that we're subsidizing for each, you know, case, for example? I'm not quite sure how to tee it up. But I think we should be, we should have visibility into whether our subsidy of state government continues to increase and at what rate. That would help us describe the unfairness when we talk to our partners in the General Assembly. So I just, yeah, I would like, I would, and the other thing I'd like to know is, I don't think I heard you say, Ms. Harper, what do you attribute, I mean, are there any lessons drawn by the lower percentages of filings for some of these different crimes? Like, are there any, any conclusions that you think are sort of statistically valid that we can draw about decreased filings? Is it just there are fewer law enforcement out there to make arrests? Or is it that we are seeing some actual positive trends? What, what conclusions would you draw?
Yeah, there's lots of different factors of that. But I will say, I think one of the things that you, that I think are contributing to this, and I can also defer to the state partners on this, but I will say, through the trial court administrator's office and through, you know, the work of the partners, there has been a very focused concentration on being able to work through backlog of cases, but also taking a look at the way in which cases are processed here. So there has been a lot of work over the last few years at looking at, you know, those opportunities that exist to really kind of make the, sort of like the management of cases that are moving through our system much more efficient. So I think, you know, that we've definitely seen, you know, some, some positive outcomes from, from those efforts.
Well, I know my time is up, but if you can follow up with me on, that doesn't go to why filings are decreased. That goes to why the cases were resolved more quickly. I would like to know if anyone can shed light, why are we seeing some significant decreases in filings?
Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Townsend Ingram, then Meyer, then Dunlap.
Thank you for your presentation. You know, it occurs to me that the, you know, the state kind of has a model. The less they spend on education, it seems like, you know, they know that the more you'll have to spend on this end. And of course, we are providing more than our share because the county's point is to look at everything through a lens of equity. So I want to know if, in fact, we would have to decrease the amount, the supplement amount that's given for our portion that we supply. Are there numbers to determine the impact of the most marginalized demographic? Can you put, can you quantify that? And in addition to that, since our portion, our supplement is, is more evenly spread out, do we have the option of making ours more targeted as other counties do if we would have to decrease?
So yeah, let us work on, let us look, let us work on, yes, the impact to any sort of like the marginalized communities. I think that when it comes to like how you want to target or apply the funds, I mean, you're, you're completely within, you know, complete with it, within your scope to determine how you want, you know, your investment applied. So I don't think there's anything that would prevent Mecklenburg County from kind of moving in sort of like that similar direction as we've seen with other counties. Again, should we get to that point to be able to say, we want to have these funds directed or applied, you know, for this specific purpose.
And if you were to say, okay, if you were to decrease by this dollar amount, it would have this impact on, you know, the time of adjudication to whatever community? Because I, I feel like there's always going to be a more, a harder impact on, on black and brown communities, minority communities than there are to any other demographic within, in the justice system. So, or to juveniles. So can you quantify that? Is there a way to say, you know, for us, if you decrease the budget by this amount, this is the impact that it would have on this demographic?
Let us kind of work on, work on that. I think there's a couple of different methodologies we could use to try to calculate that, but let us kind of go back and take a look. I will say, if there is interest in, you know, in reductions, and again, we've, we've all gotten that directive, I think, you know, we would, well, I think CJS, we would recommend kind of initially taking a look at those things that are not, that are funded within those contracts that aren't necessarily tied to the positions per se. Because again, there's lots of other things that we fund in there that are tied to, you know, to, to operations. Some of those things, I mean, to be candid, there are some things that we are funding, you know, tied to operations, which are the responsibility of the state. The state has to do that anyway. And so I think, you know, again, if there was interest in sort of taking a look at, you know, again, where reductions could be made, that would be the recommendation from the department is for us to look there first before we kind of got into the crux of looking at potentially, you know, positions.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to be quick because I have some, so what, I was always under the impression that we are lacking ADAs, but on 11, it says we have more than what's been identified as a need.
So according to the AOC's workload formula, that is what they are reporting, you know, when we look at what their work formula is to identifying their, their need, and we look at what the state is providing, what the county is providing, yes, it is showing that they are above. But I will say, and I think, you know, our district attorney can speak to this, is when we also kind of take a look at other jurisdictions across the country that are comparable in size and have, you know, filing, filing loads similar to what we have, you do see those offices being staffed at much greater numbers than, than what we see here.
Okay. Well, I would love for him to come up and address that if possible. And while he comes up, can I?
Hold on, we're going to give them an opportunity to address. Let's go around first and then you're coming up. Don't, add, add some more into our time. I got you.
So as a county, have, have we met your request at least in the last several years? The court support request?
No. No. We have, well, I mean, I would say, you know, we've not been in a position to be able to fund, you know, everything that the, that the state partners have requested. But we have seen over the last several years, you know, increases to that contract year after year. And so, you know, there are some things that we are legislatively required to fund. So those would be things like if, if the General Assembly, you know, says that they are going to give increases, salary increases to all, you know, clerks or district attorneys, then if we are funding those positions, we are then required to also fund that. So we do see those increases. But I mean, we are simply, this is me speaking, I mean, we are simply not in a position to be able to fully fund the agencies to the actual numbers based on the AOC workload formulas. I think, you know, I mean, I just, well, and I don't know, maybe I'm speaking out of turn on that, but I think it's, I think where the state has let this go, as far as the state has let this go, because again, this is not unique to us. This is something, you know, that is occurring in all, most all 100 counties, is that when we're kind of seeing the actual, you know, expressed need, the amount there, the deficit of positions, I mean, it tends to be much greater than what any county is able to really kind of come in and fill. And so, but again, as we've gone year over year, we have increased the, the amount of the contracts.
Okay. And I just want to remind my colleagues, our chair sent an email, I wrote it down, labeled "state funding void 12725." And if you look at what the state is not paying for, I think it's worth that look again if you haven't looked at it in a while. I look at that chart often.
Yeah.
Because it's shocking, and this is, this is a great example under court support. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Before we go to Commissioner Dunlap, I would ask our partners, if, do you all mind making your way over to the table over here just so that we can give you some time to speak? Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap?
Thank you. And I, I try to be brief, but I'm, I'm really a little conflicted when I look at this report. Because the first thing you see is there's a 58% decrease in Superior Court case, there's a 35% decrease in filings for, with the county, district court cases. And then you would expect then that there was a comparable decrease in the cost of doing this, since it's funded at a higher level than it was last year. But then you look at the fact that if we're funded like we do all of the rural counties, there's of course some difference in the fact that we are urban and the state doesn't make allowances for that. And then you consider the fact that if somebody suggested that we find things to fund, that would show that we are funding at a rate of $5 million more than any other county. I'm, I'm just conflicted. And so I, I would like to see something to justify why we're at the level that we are given the reduction in the case filings and things of that nature. The other thing I, I will point out, and I appreciate the fact that they do this, is that while we're funding some over and above the salaries ranges, I think that's being responsive to the specific needs that the court system has not addressed. But, you know, all of this stuff kind of works through the clerks. And if you're understaffed with clerks, then I want to understand how that impacts the rest of the system.
And I would certainly, I will kind of add it, I mean, and our, Madam Clerk can definitely add more context there, but I will also sort of add, you know, the onset of E-courts has also created, you know, an increased need amongst our clerk staff. With the onset of E-courts and, you know, the electronic filing, you know, the sort of initiation of a case, it starts with the clerk's office. And so, and again, this is not unique just to Mecklenburg County, but this is something that's being experienced in all counties that have, that have, have moved into the implementation of E-courts or Odyssey or, well, Enterprise Justice, I think is the newest name for it. But again, it has created a heavy lift for all clerk's offices that have moved into this because again, it has increased, you know, the workload significantly. But again, when we look at, you know, the state had implemented Odyssey, this is not something that was unknown. It was known from the very beginning that this was going to create increased workload for clerk's offices across the state. But we did not see the AOC recommend any sort of increase in funding for clerk's offices to, to assist with, again, that additional lift that, that E-courts was going to, was going to create.
Mr. Chair, if I may, given the fact that you've got five people wanting to speak, it is now five minutes till I'm going to offer a motion.
Thank you.
That we extend our time to allow for our speakers to speak.
Second. Okay, we got a motion. We got a motion, a second and a third. All right. To extend our time, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you for that, Commissioner Dunlap. So I think your time, your time ran out.
I'm done.
Okay. So what I'd like to do in, in, to our, our guests, what we want to do is extend you the same courtesy that we get. We get three minutes. I know you have some reaction. So we'll allow you each three minutes to provide, up to three minutes, to provide reaction. You'll hear the bell when your time is up.
Can you please state your name too before you speak? Thank you.
Spencer Meriwether, District Attorney. I have to excuse you guys, first of all. I ask you to excuse me, I'm a little bit punchy. I've been largely up since about 2:30 this morning. I had to respond to an officer-involved shooting. That is the sixth officer-involved shooting that I've responded to since September. If you can find any of my colleagues in the state of North Carolina that have had to deal with that kind of volume of that kind of specialized case, I'd be surprised. That is just one indication of how this community is far different from what is experienced in other communities. And this, two prosecutors from my office just yesterday taught a class to telecommunicators for 911 calls. They heard an interesting statistic there, that there are 2.3 million 911 calls that occur in North Carolina. 1.3 of them happen in your county. So if you ever wanted to know a difference between the public safety challenges here versus other places, that is yet another indication. I've got a lot of different things to say, but I don't have that, a whole lot of time. I will note that I consider myself to be a really good steward of the resources that we are so grateful to receive from the county. So grateful, in fact, that you have, me having 87 prosecutors in my office, I want to know where the other three of them are. Because in fact, we have 84 prosecutors, ADA's assigned to our office. As a matter of fact, the county only funds 20 of those, not 25. There is a partial funding of 12.5% for four additional prosecutors in addition to the funded attorneys in my office at an average salary of $60,000 in Mecklenburg County with the highest cost of living in the state. I'll note that the way that these cases have, or the way that our offices have had to deal with complex subject matter in the age of increased digital, in the age of body worn camera, all of these are things in the last 10 years that were demand so much more of the prosecutors that work in our offices. And yet, if you compare us with 2015 to 2017, we were getting 90 filings of homicides a year. 2015 to 2017, we were getting 90 filings of homicides a year and they were cranking out 80 homicide, 80 homicide adjudications a year. Now, we're talking about 122 filings a year in Mecklenburg County coming into my office and we're adjudicating 123 of them. So if you wondered why there is a difference and why things are so much more complex, they were at arms in Wake County when they had 40 homicides in their county. The demands on our office, offices are immense. The last thing I want to say, and I've got a lot to say, but the last thing I want to make sure I draw attention to is the workload formula that's been cited here. You'll note that that workload formula that IDS had said that the Public Defender's Office should have 93 public, Assistant Public Defenders, and that my office should have 84. Anything wrong with that? Now, the Public Defender's Office does not do juvenile cases. As a matter of fact, if someone, also if someone were to come in here and rob me, and the four people that did it were actually felons and they were, they shot me, I would be.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If I could, if, if I was, if they were charged with three or four different counts, now, as you mentioned, like, all those things are sort of bundled into one. Those are things that change the way that we look at numbers here. But with the workload formula, the way that the Conference of District Attorneys decided to do it, well, what I wanted, excuse me, what I wanted to tell you was that the Public Defender's Office only represents one of those four defendants because of conflicts. My office takes all of them. So how would it be that that office, which handles a smaller universe of cases and doesn't deal with all the cases in a single offense, would require more attorneys than would be required in my office? And it's because filings is not the only factor that determines a workload formula. The true workload formula done by the Conference of District Attorneys said that, oh, across the state, we needed 400 more prosecutors across the state. But they said that the legislature would not grant that request. And so they modified it and made it smaller. The Public Defender's Office did not modify it, did not modify it, and neither of us got our request granted. Now, I hollered and screamed and told people that we needed far more than what we got. But that's why you see a number up there that is bogus. The number that you should be applying is 12.5 prosecutors for every 100,000 residents that you have in your community. And that would put us at 120, like the 30 large, large jurisdiction prosecutors that showed up in my office last week, amazed that we are able to accomplish with how little resources that we have. If you hear a motion in my voice, it's not a motion for the people in my office that I want to keep working. It's the emotion that I'm thinking about the victims that we're fighting for each and every day. And we're scraping and cutting and getting by and doing the best that we can. And to think, to think that we would not be able to do that without your investment, that's how important it is. Now, I know, and the last thing I'll say, I know the state is who ought to be paying for all of this. And don't you believe that I'm not saying that at every instance when I meet with our General Assembly? But I promise you that if you were to take away any of these resources, it's not the district attorney who would, who would suffer. It's your constituents, your community, your public safety, your sense of justice that would suffer. I want to make sure I haven't given opportunity to my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. District Attorney. I'm going to, I'm going to ask everyone, though, to please be respectful. We appreciate it. We understand the passion. Going to ask everybody to be respectful of, of the time that we've allocated, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Casey Callaway, Trial Court Administrator. Very briefly, I wanted to respond to a few questions. There was questions regarding the state's allocation of resources to the court. About 2.52% of the state's budget goes to fund the judicial branch. That's less than one cent of every tax dollar. In terms of contribution for our, for Mecklenburg County state positions, the county funds approximately 16% of our operating costs. That's largely for personnel. And then the city funds about 1% of those costs. Everything else is funded by the state. In terms of our operating budget, that was the figure that I believe was 823,000. Many of those costs are things that statutorily the county is responsible for in terms of facility management and in terms of the jury management system that we have. Those are two of the big ticket items that are funded through the operational budgets. Lastly, to touch on the decrease in filings. So the statistics that you saw with the decrease in filings, that is from the COVID-19 pandemic to the present, in which we had an inflation of cases because courts were modified and sessions were canceled. So the, so to give you perspective for today, so as of the recent data that was published, and that's through the, the last of December of 2024, there are currently 12,276 cases, felony cases pending in our courts. There are currently 48,001 cases that are pending, criminal cases that are pending in our district courts. That is the highest number of pending cases for both district and Superior Court in the state. And that is more than, than Wake County, just to give everyone a comparison of those numbers. And we can look at the, the median, I think the median pending days to disposition was a data set that was looked at. And so we can try to get you, the county commissioners, and we can work with Sonya and her team to get you that data. I will cede the rest of my time to my colleagues. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak with you all today.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good late afternoon. I'm Kevin Tully. I am your public defender from Mecklenburg County. I wanted to thank Spencer Meriwether for his passion. I also want to make clear that what he was not saying was that my office doesn't need 94 lawyers. It does. It doesn't have them. We have 60. By the way, you don't pay for eight, which is what you were told in the presentation. You don't pay for, I'll take eight. You don't pay for that many. 55 of the positions are paid for by the state. You pay for five of those currently. What he was saying, and I agree with Mr. Meriwether, is his number is off. The study that was done by the AOC was not accurate, and I would say, not honest. His office should have about 122, 123 attorneys. And so we, we support each other in that. It was raised earlier, this is about the fair administration of justice, also the timely administration of justice. And that does have implications. It has implications for victims of crime. It has implications for my clients. These aren't cases, these are people. It has implications in your community's faith in the court system. It was raised here about Wake County not investing in their system. Ask Wake County, ask for the statistics on Wake County's backlog in their court system versus Mecklenburg's backlog in, in your system. That has implications not only in your community's faith in the court system, but it has dollar consequences. You are on the hook for the jail. When people's cases languish, the jail fills up. You pay more dollars every single day. The question about disparities and equity was raised. Your jail currently houses, the jail population is 76% black. Okay, so these have real life consequences for people. They have real life consequences on the values you have professed. You have invested because the state is not going to do it. I've been around since 1989. They're not going to do it. We thank you for every dollar that you have invested. We have been tremendous stewards of that. Everybody in this system is bone tired. And yet, they show up every day and they do the work, the hard work that is the criminal court system. We support each other and we thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Elisa Chingary, Clerk of Superior Court and Ex officio Judge of Probate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and to have this discussion. My colleagues have shared a lot of information with emotional urgency. And I share that as well, but I will horn in on three points to, to answer the questions that were raised during the discussion. One, I would say that this workload study is fairly outdated. I know that Ms. Harper received the most recent information from the AOC, but it does not take into consideration the current calculations that have changed since the launch of E-courts. As you heard, the clerk, the system was built and designed for the clerk to have the lion's share of the work. It is made to be simpler for other people to use and access, but that is at the hands of clerks being available to do the work. We do not have enough clerks available to do that work. We do not have enough clerks to operate at a competent standard. The newest number says that the clerk's identified need is at 256, which would show a deficit of 36 positions. What is the cost of us not having those positions? I can name three very quickly. One is the number of errors that surface in our courts have risen. That can be something as horrific as someone being released that should not have been, or someone being held that should not have been. It could be as simple as having to go to court because a record was not placed in the system correctly indicating that you did not need to show up. So errors are increasing because we do not have the clerks available to do the work. Second is delays. I am often asked by my colleagues, can you staff a special session so we can manage the backlog of DWI, so that we can manage areas of public concern? My answer is also no. It is often no. It is sometimes yes. But it is often no, because there is not enough court staffing to manage those cases. And the last thing that I will say about the problem is attrition. If you work and overwork dedicated staff, it amounts to abuse. It has amounted to abuse. And we have seen the attrition rate increase as a result of that. We are losing institutional knowledge. We are losing dedicated public servants because of the work environment of being overworked and not having enough resources to do the work that we very much care about. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. My name is Roy Wiggins. I'm the Chief District Court Judge. You've heard from the leaders of our court system today. You've heard a lot of numbers. You've heard a lot of things that are incredibly important. They do a great job of compiling that. I'm going to speak to you a little bit more holistically. We have 20 district court judges. There's nothing you can do about that because this is state funding position. Whatever help you can give us in Raleigh, we greatly appreciate. We'd want at least more. But I can tell you, our judges work very hard and myself and my judicial assistant prepare the schedule each week. And it's a struggle every week to keep our courts fully staffed with judges. However, our work cannot be done without the assistance of the clerk's office, the TCA's office, the public defenders and the DA's. It's essential. It's a holistic process. And the support that you give us to, to increase, to help with their staffing, to help with each of those offices staffing, it, it gives us the ability to do our work. I heard Mr. Commissioner Griffin indicated something. He indicated something that caught my attention. He was discussing the difference between Wake and Mecklenburg County. And I think he made a great distinction about suburban versus urban. We are different. How many of us have heard the term "the great state of Mecklenburg"? It's often said not in a very thoughtful or kind way, but it's, we are different. We are different than anywhere else in the state. I have an opportunity to meet and speak with Chief District Court Judges and judges across the state. And they're often amazed at being what it means to be a Mecklenburg County judge versus being a judge in a smaller community. They have their unique challenges, but, but we do have our very unique challenges in Mecklenburg County. We have a very dedicated staff and we are very thankful for what you do to help us. I think justice, or justice, Commissioner Altman indicated something that I think is incredibly important to keep in mind. As we continue to fund these things and ask for your support in these things, I think something you indicated about the length of time that people spend in general, losing the, the ability to maintain a job or the ability to have your case adjudicated quickly. There's a saying that's often said in the justice system, "Justice delayed is justice denied." And it's incredibly important that we do move those cases through efficiently and productively, not only for our victims, but for our people that are accused, that may potentially wrongful, or if they aren't wrongfully accused, a chance to move on with their lives and get whatever adjudication they have, so they can get back to their families and be taxpaying, productive members of society. I urge you to take the numbers that have been given you today, to take them seriously, and I know you will. You guys do a great job. We're so thankful for what you do, to take that under consideration and give us whatever consideration you give. We are certainly thankful for everything you do. And I know it's hard to, to, to come up with the money and juggle all the things that you do every single day for our community. And I'm thankful for that. And I know every one of our leadership team is thankful for that. But with that, I thank you very much.
Well, thank you and thank all of you. And before you, before you run, because I, I think I know my colleagues well enough to know that there's probably a comment or two. And what we're going to do, Madam Clerk and colleagues, I'm just going to ask you to be respectful of the time. Let's do a 60-second reaction if you have one, because I do want to give you guys some bandwidth. But be respectful of the time, please. And I'm going to start with you, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, and go just go around the dais.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for what you do. Spencer, your passion is, I just really want to thank you for, for, for what you do. It's a crime. It is a crime that the state of North Carolina's budget only allocates 2.5%, I mean, to the courts, to the criminal justice system. 2.5% of the entire state budget. This is insane. It is literally insane. I really want to thank you guys for sort of setting the record straight on these numbers that can be very misleading. Numbers can say whatever you want them to say, right? But I really appreciate y'all and your bringing it to life. That was absolutely necessary. And I want you to know that as a commissioner, I support the courts 100%. I think you guys are a huge priority and we need to, we need to prioritize you on our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer?
Thank you. I have heard that speech you gave Spencer in various ways over the last couple of years. And I knew something was off, and I'm so glad that you spoke the truth. And that's important for us to hear as a board. But it's really important for the public to understand what's going on, because I promise you, they don't. They don't. They blame everybody, including you and the courts. But you are, you're, you're handcuffed, excuse the pun. So I just want to thank you, each of you, for, for speaking your piece and telling us the truth, the hard truth, and we need to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap?
I'll simply say that I really appreciate the fact that you guys are here to shed some light on these numbers. Because just looking at them for what they are, it doesn't tell the story. But I, I appreciate the fact that you were here to, to, to tell the story.
Thank you. Commissioner Altman?
Thank you for your toil and your heart. I know that our gratitude doesn't mean a whole lot if we don't supply you with additional resources. I know that gratitude isn't enough. I know that we're going to do the best we can, but please know, we see you and we're deeply grateful.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin?
Thank you for, for being here. Judge Wiggins, I've known the difference between Wake County and Mecklenburg for, for many, many years. There are differences, but one of the things that constituents say, whether you're in Huntersville or Matthews or Betisford Road, they raise the issue of crime and public safety. So it is certainly an important presentation. And I really appreciate the statistics and the data update that you guys have brought to the table. And I just hope that we can do a better job in giving you a little bit more support, given all the constraints we have in terms of trying to, as the manager says, you can't be everything for everybody. But we ought to be able to figure out how to create a more safe community for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram?
I am really sorry that I missed the first portion of your comments, Meriwether, but the point was still made. And I very much appreciate all of your comments. And I, being a numbers person too, I know that the numbers can say whatever you want them to say. Of course, on the two spectrums, our education system and our criminal justice system, which one feeds into the other, we're underfunded by the state. We're got all the time. But your point has been made. The impact has been made upon us, impressed upon us. And we also, I also want to just show my appreciation and thanks for all that you do.
Well, I want to thank you all for your comments. Let me wrap this up by echoing and doubling down on what my colleagues are saying. When we say thank you, we really hope that that doesn't land in a hollow way. We do appreciate what you all do and your teams. This board views you as our partners. And we want to do everything that we can to support you. We know how important, we look at We know how important, we look at um data all the time, we survey the community, and they tell us that public safety is one of their major concerns. Um, and we know we can't administer that without your expertise, that expertise of your staff. And uh, sometimes it does get lost on the public, um, the gravity of what you have to deal with on a daily basis. And today was very, very important for you all to be here, uh, as you come here every year, but since my time sitting on the board, I think um today hits a lot different than what we've had in the past. Today really displayed the gravity of what we're dealing with as a community and what we face. And the conflation of numbers or what that means, again, I think uh someone said, we're looking at people, right? People on both sides, um, whether they're a part or caught up in the system or working the system, uh, we're looking at people. And uh, I think it's very, very important for us to have this takeaway, and I, I, I do appreciate um, you know, the passion of our district attorney and, and what you all represented. Um, those that are in your downline, that are under you and working for you and with you, should really be proud of, of how you stepped up, and when I think about uh the service that you provide to the community, I think we all feel uh very, very thankful and grateful, and will walk away today committed to finding how we can help, not if we can, how we can, to continue to support and to continue to demonstrate that we are partners and we are on the same team. So again, I want to say thank you uh for being here and carving out time to offer your thoughts. Uh, Sonya, we want to thank you for your work, certainly, and the work of your team, and uh we'll continue to make things happen, so. All right, um, with that being said, I think we are at Commissioner Reports. I don't know where I'm gonna start. We're gonna start with the Vice Chair.
No report.
Madam Clerk, if we're gonna do three minutes, thank you. Thank you all. Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what I, what I want to say for my report is that, you know, we had a presentation from the library today, and we had our courts, and, you know, somebody might look at this and say, you know, try to look at these uh and say, what's more important? And, and I just want to say, you know, this is, these are all connected, and in my view, these, one thing leads to another, it's like a circular thing, and we have education in there, our priorities are all connected. And so I just, I just want us to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend-Egron.
I have no report, thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell said it beautifully, no report.
Yep. Commissioner Griffin.
Just to piggyback on Susan's call, the social determinants of health.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap.
I'll just share again, for those who were not present, and thank you for those who were present, I know that some of you just couldn't make it, but uh, the revealing or the ribbon cutting of the library in the university city area uh last week was met with great applause, um, and you heard them talk about the numbers that were present on Saturday. Uh, this community has been waiting for that library for a long time, and so thank you for your support in getting it done, thank you for being present uh when the community came to um, to celebrate. And then lastly, I want to again congratulate our manager on the award that she received uh this afternoon. Um, I, I joked with her and I told her, I said, "Well, the message that she delivered was the message that I gave her." But uh, I really do um think, Dina, that you've done an outstanding job and very deserving of the recognition that you received today.
Yes. Well, you stole my thunder. I remember I used to do that to you when you sat in this chair, right?
I get to speak before you.
But I, I, you're right, you're right, but I, I did want to say, uh, just very quickly, I do want to uh just say congratulations to the manager, it was well deserved, um, today. And, and I also want to just say, colleagues, um, I, I think today was a, um, it was one of the most interesting budget policy workshops we've had um in quite some time. And um, Susan, I, I think you really said it best, but two things that I would really think about, um, we've got, we're running into some choppy waters, and we've got um some tough decisions, I think, coming, particularly as it relates to the budget. Um, but I will just say this and leave it here, that this group is here for this time and this purpose. And I know that we'll rise to the challenge to meet the needs of what the community needs, and we've got to make some tough decisions, but uh I think this group is in place for this particular time. And so I just want to leave it there, and at this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foesed? Eyes have it, meeting adjourned, thank you.